Okay, all right. Test one, two, check, check. That's good? Okay. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go ahead and get our hearing started. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to here and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'll take a moment here to introduce our board members. On the audiences, we'll start on the audience's left is Justin Gross. Next to him is Marlaus Jones. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. On my left is Rhonda Sedillo, and next to her is Dave Gare. This is a seven-member board. We're missing, we have one member that had resigned a couple of months ago, has not been reappointed, and that would make us six, and we have one absent today, so that's five of us. And I'm going to come back to that in a moment. I'm going to introduce our city staff, who will also be assisting us today. To my left is the Board of Adjustment's legal counsel, Mr. Gary Guidelock. City staff that will be assisting, Jason Van Essen, planning administrator. Shreyosy Chakrabarti, city planner. Catherine Drehaas, city planner. And Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. And Eric has a new title too, right? Yeah. He's still zoning enforcement officer for this meeting. Our meeting moderator down here in front is Tyler Hall. I'm going to cover our meeting procedure here next. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of us, you may hope it's your only time, but we will help take you through this. So don't be nervous about the process itself. As we go through the agenda, we will help you through that. But to give you some background on the board and the process here, just for a couple of minutes here, I'll review that. First of all, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. This is a hearing that will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. This meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. If you don't have a copy of the agenda or the staff recommendations, we have them in the box here by the door. So when I'm through with my opening remarks, if you don't have one, feel free to step up and grab one. The board members each have a copy of this agenda and staff recommendation. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. The first part of our agenda is what's called the consent portion of the agenda. Consent items are not planned to be individually discussed, and they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual present in the audience, or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And I'll come back to that consent agenda for a review of that here in just a moment. For the regular portion of the agenda, once an item is announced, the city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that item, and anyone who wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal, will be allowed up to five minutes to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the agenda item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must only speak from the podium here at the center of the room, and begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address. That address can be your business or residence as appropriate, in the event you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only on those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item. The board will immediately deliberate the request, and we will make a decision here today on the appeal. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. Finally, if your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until at least one week from today's hearing to contact the city's permit and development center if you would need to obtain any necessary building permits or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa district court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is a part of the permanent record. So if you have any photos, documents, drawings, maps, anything like that that you want to show us today, if you have not already given city staff copies of those, you will need to do so here at the hearing, or let them make appropriate copies. You may contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything presented. Just a few quick housekeeping items. Please avoid any undue conversation in the audience, so as to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a fine job. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced, also so far so good. And if you need to use the restroom, you can leave through the main door here. You don't have to go back downstairs, there's restrooms just past the staircase on your left. Subject to the length of the hearing, we may take a five-minute break or so around 3:00. Once your agenda item is completed, you're welcome to leave, or you can stick around to learn further. So that's our background. So what we're first going to do here is take a look at our consent agenda and see if we have any changes from staff on anything. So right now, we have items one, two, three, four, and five on consent, but Catherine, any changes?
Mr. Chair and Board, Catherine Drehaas, planner for the City of Des Moines. At this time, we do not have any changes to the agenda by staff.
Okay, all right, so no withdrawals or anything? Are there any requests to move items to the regular portion of the agenda? Any concerns about that?
None from staff.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull the audience here, because as I mentioned, if these items on consent, city staff has recommended approval of these items, but they are subject to the staff recommendations that have been provided. So if you're one of the appellants and you don't agree to those conditions, you can ask this to be placed on the regular agenda, and we will review that here today. Doesn't necessarily mean we may rule for or against you, we'll just see what the facts present. But staff is recommending conditional use approval for item one in the vicinity of 2806 East 29th Street. Again, that's subject to certain staff conditions. Is there anybody here who would be opposed to granting that conditional use subject to staff recommendations? If so, just raise your hand. Okay, nobody for item one. Okay? Item two is a zoning exception request at 6079 Southeast 14th Street, related to some signage. And again, staff is recommending approval of the appeal, subject to certain restrictions on that. Is there anybody here that would object to approving that with the conditions as presented? All right, this gentleman would, so we will put that on the regular portion of the agenda. So move item two from consent. Item three is a zoning exception request at 6025 Southeast 14th Street, not too far away. That's also related to some signage. Anybody here opposed to that? Okay, we'll move item three to the regular portion. Item four is a conditional use request at 4115 University Avenue, related to the selling of alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer. Anybody here opposed to granting that conditional use? Okay, I see a few hands, so we will put that on the regular portion of the agenda. Pardon me. Item five is also a conditional use request related to selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer at 1011 Locust Street. Anybody here opposed to granting that conditional use, subject to the restrictions staff has recommended? Okay, seeing none, we'll leave items one and five alone. So that, I would leave items one, conditional use at 2806 East 29th, and item five, conditional use at 1011 Locust Street. Unless the board has any concerns with those, would there be a motion to grant approval of those items on consent? Move by Marlaus. Second by Rhonda. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, so motion carries five to zero. So if you were here for items one or five, those have been approved, subject to staff recommendations, you'll get a copy of that decision and order in about a week. So you're welcome to leave the hearing at this time, or again, you can stick around to listen to some of these other ones. Now, before we move forward, since we're going to hear items two, three, four, and I believe six was on our regular agenda, on each of these items, since there are only five members of the board present today, it always takes four members of this board for an approval. It's not a simple majority, like three to two, and you get it. You always have to have four yeses. So when we only have five members present, you got to convince all of us but one of the reasoning for your request. So we offer you an option, if you're the applicant, you can defer this to the next month's meeting. However, keep in mind, I can never guarantee that we have seven members here. I can't guarantee that we have six members here. But when we get down to five, I just make that statement. So, you know, you can't kick the can down the road forever, but if you'd want to defer to next month, there may still just be five of us here next month. Maybe there'd be six. So what I'm going to do here is just see if there's anybody kind of in order of appearance here. We've got items two, three, four, and six. So the appellant for item two, you want to stick around and have your case heard? Okay, he says yes, I see him back there. Item three, same thing? Okay. Appellant for item four, ready to stick around? Okay, item six? Okay, would you go ahead and just step up to the mic so I can get your name and address here?
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
It'd be important to probably mention that I think the date's going to be different for the next one as well?
Oh, yes.
Just so that the appellant knows that.
Yeah, because of RagBride, we usually meet the fourth Wednesday of the month at 1:00 PM, because RagBride will be in town and like right here pretty much going by on that fourth Wednesday of July. We're moving it to, what's our date? August 2nd, which is the first Wednesday of the month. Yeah, so with that in mind, sir, if I could just have your name, address?
Ed Allen Zorbar.
Okay, and Mr. Allen, why would you like to continue to the next meeting?
I don't feel we have a quorum.
Well, we have a quorum.
I'd like seven members.
Okay, but as I noted, you'd like seven members. I can never guarantee that we have seven members here.
Understood.
And if we get to next month, and I don't have seven, or I don't have six, or I only have five like today?
Understood.
Okay, okay. If you want to defer till next month?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, that looks okay. So again, you've got the right to do that for this time around, so?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Do we have to actually vote on that? Yes?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, the applicant has requested to move to next month meetings. The applicant also understands this is not a, you know, ongoing deferral situation, but for this month, he's requested that deferral. All right, motion by Marlaus, second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries five, zero. Okay, all right. So just as a reminder again, it's down the line more than one month, August 2nd, that'd be next time around. Okay. Okay, so that brings us then to item two. So the way we'll actually start the hearing process, staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal. Catherine will take us through it.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehaas, planner for the city. As mentioned, this request is before you for a type-two zoning exception for installation of an illuminated monument sign, locate with a maximum height of 12 feet. The location is at the intersection of Southeast 14th Street and Cummins Road. It is a signalized intersection. A restaurant use will be going into this area, and they are just looking to place a multi-tenant sign in this location at 12 feet high, and they are requesting it to be, let me see, forgive me, I forgot, oh, 8.8 feet from the front property line. Staff is willing to recommend approval, but we are recommending it at the condition that the sign be located at 12 and a half feet from the front property line, rather than the requested 8.8 feet. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, or return to any slides that we might have zipped through. Oh, and my apologies, I always forget this part. We did send out our notice, we did not receive any communication back from the neighboring properties within the impacted area. And then, again, happy to take any questions you might have for staff, or return to any slides.
Justin?
Thank you, Chair.
Can you go back to the slide? There's like three different signs, that one. Okay, so we're talking about just the one there in the middle? The cane one? Or we're talking about all three of those?
Right now, we are, I'm sorry, we are just talking about the one in the middle for this item. And I can go back?
And so, and so the other ones are not part of this, right?
Not part of this request.
But they all sort of are the same in term, I mean, there's some uniformity there, is that right?
There's a little bit of uniformity, yes. The sign to the south was heard by the board last April, April 2022, and then the sign to the north will be heard subsequently.
Okay. That's the Olive Garden that was April of '22?
Correct, and it has been constructed. It did come in for a request as well. We staff recommended that it be located at 12 and a half feet from the front property line. It was heard in the public hearing, and the board made the determination to grant their request at six feet from the front property line.
Okay, so the Olive Garden's going to be six feet, right?
It is six feet, it has been constructed.
And the Canes one, they're asking for the same or whatever, and then, or what's the recommendation?
Their current request is for 8.8 feet from the front property line, and staff is recommending 12.5 feet, which is in line with previous requests where we've granted 50% relief of the 20-foot requirement by code.
Okay, all right, thank you. And related to that, Catherine, so 6101 Southeast 14th, I see kind of by itself down there, some black and red sign, what does that say on it?
This is a part of a larger redevelopment of the parcel, and they are doing other work on some of the existing buildings.
Okay, Cube Smart Storage, so Cube Smart does not plan to be, have part of a monument sign at the road, or?
I'm not sure that would be a great question for the appellant, but that's not part of the current request or the subsequent request.
Yeah, because with the Canes chicken or whatever it is signage, it says tenant panel below it, up to two of them, would that be for that building where Canes is? Or could it be for others on the larger parcels there?
Since it would be located on the parcel, it would have to be associated with businesses on the parcel.
With the parcel, got it, got it.
I'm not aware of which businesses will be utilizing those.
All right, we can ask the applicant too. Okay, all right, any, any other questions for staff? Okay, all right, well, thanks for getting us started. And applicant, or representative of the applicant. So the way this part works, the applicant's representative has 10 minutes to present their reasoning for their appeal, and we just need you to begin, sir, by giving your name and address.
Adrian Mitchell, at 971 Northeast Broadway Avenue.
All right. And Adrian, who are you with?
Chestnut Signs, representing Global Crest Properties.
Gotcha. All right, so tell us about the reasoning for your appeal here.
So in order to keep uniformity of the new development of the location, as discussed before, the previous sign, does this work?
Yep.
The previous sign was allowed for a 12-foot-tall monument sign set back six foot from the property line, and in doing so?
And if there's anything you want to show, you can kind of lay it on that overhead there, and then staff can help switch to cameras. Yeah, cool.
So that, this is an existing sign that was built last year, installed last year. It is in the location just 150 feet south of the current item, which is Raisin Canes. It is set at 12-foot tall by 12-foot back, and it was approved at a six-foot setback. So to make it uniform, I think right now what we're asking is for 8.8, but if it can be six, I put 8.8 due to the division triangle, that was the location of the sign, to put it outside of the 15-foot by 15-foot triangle to allow for it to be viewed. That was, a six-foot minimum would be unacceptable. I mean, just to make it consistent, as opposed to just having one be 8.8 and one be six. So for the actual sign that's being produced, and if it is an issue for the other multi-tenant panels, so the goal of the design between this sign and the sign to the north, which is the second item, or the third item, is to have, was to have tenants of that back space occupying this front sign. If that's going to be an off-premise issue, I'm sure Raisin Canes would not have a problem occupying the entire sign, based on their, in your feet of their frontage, they would be allowed that 90-square-foot entire sign. So if that's an issue, the question would then later be raised about representing the locations back, because it's not only?
Yeah, you're getting it. Oh, maybe, yeah, okay.
So this is not the most updated drawing, but these back locations will just be, so this is going to be a storage center, and then this is split into two, and then this is also split into two. So it's going to be a multi-tenanted building, but Raisin Canes would be the only tenant in the parcel up front.
But those are on, although I'm not, well, I'm not sure if your site plan shows it or not, but if those are separate legal parcels, then it's my understanding you can't have signage on one parcel?
Yes, that would be a different issue for a different time.
Yeah.
In terms of just the monument sign, like I said, Raisin Canes has no problem occupying the entirety of that sign.
Okay.
And again, to match uniformity of the Olive Garden that is currently existing, we're requesting a 12-foot sign. The city code requires a 25-foot setback to allow a 12-foot-tall sign, but when, in doing this, there's one, not room for 25-foot setback, two, this road is a fairly busy thoroughfare of Des Moines, and we already have a sign at 12-foot, so.
Okay, so Adrian, is that your presentation?
The only other thing I would suggest or mention is there's not currently any form of ground sign on this location.
Uh-huh.
Due to a request by the city, as of a couple of months ago, this sign was removed. The city required this pole sign to be removed, so there is currently no ground sign for any of these tenants.
Okay, so the Aspen sign's gone.
That is entirely removed, as the city, per the city requirement for developing this location, so.
Got you.
That being said, we are looking to increase signage to allow for the 12-foot-tall sign, so that there is visible signage on this busy thoroughfare.
Got you. Okay, should be willing to take a few questions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, anybody got questions for Adrian? Okay, so Adrian, you mentioned a number of times, the reasoning for your request is for uniformity and consistency.
Yes.
By itself, that's not a reasoning within our purview to grant an appeal. There needs to be special considerations related to the property in question itself. So I always try to say that, you know, tell me about what you're doing and why not, hey, somebody else got to do this. And I realize it's very close, but going back to that, I just want to preface something before I ask you a question here. At the time that we considered the Olive Garden sign, we saw a site plan that showed a parking lot, and based on where the entrance to the parking lot was, I believe, I don't know if it was you or somebody else, had said, "Well, if you make me push that sign back further now, I have to move the entrance to my driveway, and that's going to screw up my parking area." That's the best I can recall it. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm curious, when I keep hearing uniformity, consistency, what's your other reasoning?
So for the Raisin Canes, it does have an island where it can be installed upon, So there is the island there. In terms of that, I will say that the, that island, putting the sign back further, would then hinder sightlines of people leaving the site, but if it's set back to the location where we're proposing it, it is far enough set back due to the property line being set back, so their vision triangle would not be obstructed. Because if you're requiring a 12-foot setback, the sign is 11-foot long, that would set the whole sign back into that space, causing an issue with vision triangle.
But doesn't the city's sign ordinance already account for even onsite vision triangles and stuff like that? If you can answer that, great. If you're not aware, you don't have to answer that one.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so you talk about, well, if we set the sign back far enough, we're going to mess with our internal vision triangle, and people can't see to navigate on the site, correct?
Sure.
So doesn't the city's site plan already account for making sure there's appropriate clearances for signs onsite, so that they don't obstruct people's views on the property?
Yes, yes, so the city does have requirements for that. The issue is then locating a place where the sign can be put without blocking that.
Yeah, so if we wouldn't approve this, then you'd have to have an amended request to shove it back, and that would cause, and just trails down the line for concern.
In theory, the sign could be placed in the middle island, but then it's not necessarily, I mean, it's in the parcel?
Right.
But it's just not, an ideal location is in the turn, I mean, that's just?
I've got you.
A standard, I guess, of where signs are placed is, oh, I'm turning into this.
By the main entrance, right, yeah. Is there a secondary entrance on the north there, like up toward where the Dollar Tree other development would be?
Yes.
But that's not at the lighted intersection, correct?
No, so this intersection is the only intersection at the light where you can turn in heading southbound.
Okay, okay. At the other one, can you cross over Southeast 14th, like with left turns in and out, but it's just not lighted? I'm trying to remember.
There's a median.
So it's not a divided median there, it's a solid median? It'd be a one-way?
The only location heading southbound to enter in is this. Olive Garden might have one.
Got you, okay.
Then you're passing the business to live all the way around.
I got you. Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Adrian. Okay, so the way this now works, the applicant has given their 10-minute or less presentation. Anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant, you can have up to five minutes. Anybody opposed to the applicant's appeal? Anybody in neutrality? Seeing none? Any further questions for staff? And then we'll, yeah, and then we'll see, any questions for staff? All right, zoning enforcement officer, would you like to add anything?
I just wanted to clarify, based on the Gilbert case, the actual content of the sign is not really in question.
Right.
The earnings of the size area are based on the property and the building.
Right.
So whether Cube Smart wants to go on the Canes sign, that's, we're not going to be able to regulate that.
No, no.
So I just wanted to point that out. So in our previous ordinance and in prior to Gilbert, we did regulate whether the, the message related to something on the property, but we're not able to really do that, given that Supreme.
Interesting, okay. So even though it could advertise an off-premise business, the Gilbert ruling says, "Well, that's okay, they have the right to a certain amount of signage, whatever they want to do with it."
Yeah, and now we regulate the general advertising signs, which we know as billboards, based on their size.
Okay, that's interesting, okay. Well, it might help them out in the end then. Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. All right, so Adrian, you want to say anything else? Since zoning enforcement spoke, it sounds like it was a clarification rather than any kind of, kind of rebuttal, okay. All right, then we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. What do you guys think? This is still at, this is still at exception level, right? Okay, all right, yeah, so the bar is not quite as high as, as a variance. Okay, all right. Well, if I give Adrian some credit here, which he probably deserves, good employee and of a business, you know, he said, "Hey, we're trying to be consistent. We are trying to look the same. This is kind of where our sign needs to be. It does look like the driveways are kind of parallel to where they were before, if maybe there was a little more room, you know. I like people to stick within the ordinance when they can, but this probably won't look like a nose-out-of-joint here." Dave, you're, you're a sign interest guy, what do you think? Okay, yeah. All right, anybody want to make a motion one way or the other? Staff did recommend denial, correct? Oh, I'm sorry, approval. Okay, so, so we would be amending the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I think you heard the applicant say they were looking for that 12 and a half to be six instead.
Right, right, okay. So staff recommendation by itself, if we wanted to grant the applicant's request, we'd have to amend what's highlighted there too, yeah. That was eight, is that correct?
Six.
Six?
If we can afford six, where eight is the requested setback outside of the...
All right, all right, so it's important to know what he's requesting here. So you want to clarify that, if we want to carry this ball for you?
I would request six.
Yeah, go ahead and come back up so that we can hear that. Yeah, this is very important here, you got to tell us what you're asking for directly, just as a reminder.
I would request the six-foot setback as opposed to the 8.8 for the form of uniformity, as opposed to having, if you set it back an odd amount, it's just going to be more noticeable. So amending the document from 12.5 to six to mirror existing properties for the function of uniformity.
All right, so it'd be six instead of 12.5?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Adrian. And staff, just for clarification, with what he's asking there, the six-foot, does that change the exception level in this?
And I apologize, we're having a little discussion.
Sure.
The size of the sign is not changing, right? That's, that's static.
Right.
So all we're talking about is the recommended condition, the relief doesn't change, it's just this recommended setback of six feet. If that's the case, we're fine to, if you want to go ahead and just change that 12 and a half to six, that is totally appropriate for the board to do.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification. So does somebody want to make a motion with that language potentially? All right, would there be a second? All right, so a motion by Dave, a second by Rhonda, to accept staff recommendation for approval of the sign, subject to the following conditions, one and two. However, in number one, we're going to amend that, it shall be setback a minimum of six feet from the west frontage property line, not the 12 and a half. All right, if that's clear, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye if you concur.
Aye.
All right, no opposition, all right, motion carries five zero. Okay, you got that one. So let's move on to item number three, a zoning exception request at 6025 Southeast 14th.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city. This item is similar to the item we just heard, and is just located to the parcel to the north on Southeast 14th Street. Again, the appellant is requesting relief for a 12-foot sign, so it'll be four feet over the allowed eight feet, and by code, it would need to be placed at 25 feet from the front property line. In this case, the applicant is asking for that 12-foot sign to be located at 1.2 feet from the front property line. Staff is comfortable recommending approval of the request with the condition that the 12-foot sign be located at 12.5 feet from the front property line. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have for staff, or move to any of the slides.
And while these are two separate items, basically same recipe formula as this last one, right?
These are two separate...
Situation conditions and staff.
Two separate requests, and thus we have to hear them separately, but yes, they are extremely similar in case and nature to one another, as well as the item we heard in April 2022.
All right, all right. Any questions for staff?
Sure, yeah.
Justin?
Just, just so I'm clear on, so the la, I know we're not...
You got your mic on over there?
Yeah, the last one, it seemed like the staff then was fine with the, the six feet. Is, is, is the staff fine now with this being at six feet?
So staff has not been, staff has not been comfortable with the six-foot setback in April 2022. Staff recommended 12.5 feet for the Olive Garden setback, and I believe as the chair recollected during the public hearing and discussion of the board on that item, it was determined by the board that six feet would be an acceptable setback. So that was the board's decision, whereas staff's recommendation at that time and, and today as well on both of these items, has been the half, the 50% relief of the 25-foot required setback, which is 12.5 feet.
Okay, I, I guess I misunderstood. I thought there was some discussion on the last issue, and it was clarified among staff that they were fine then with moving forward to six. Was that, is that now what?
The reason that, that I asked, I, I just wanted to clarify that the applicant's request was still within the exception level for the signage, that yes, he was asking for six, that still is within the exception level, and that's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Catherine? Okay, thank you for a good presentation on that one. We've got your name, Adrian, we know who you represent, so I think we're good there.
So this one is the same ask thing, except the issue with this one is, this one is significantly closer, which I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth and just want a one-foot setback for a 12-foot-tall sign, which is unreasonable. The, so based off that, though, I have a larger thing. So this one does not have the island that is jutting out behind it, which makes this more difficult for placement of this sign. Discussions have been had between me and my customer about moving this sign up to the north, where there is a possible setback, but there's no way to build an island without completely reconfiguring the construction of the parking lot. So I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that it not based off this document of that location, but be placed at a different location at a similar setback, because there's not a better location to put this? If that's not allowed, then the sign would just be set at the standard eight-foot tall.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to ask staff if that, you know, if that, the placement of the sign, if that changes the conditions of the appeal, should the appeal be amended, and maybe just need to come back. Jason, you want to address that briefly, if Adrian's cool with that?
I, I think the, the board could take action to say the height is okay, and then a setback of whatever, and, you know, we have the staff recommendation, you have what you did on this last sign, and then we would work with applicant as they moved forward to find a spot that conforms to those parameters.
Okay, all right.
So if, the, I mean, the option would be otherwise to place an eight-foot-tall sign there, which does not have the same setback issues, and at that point, the eight-foot-tall sign would be allowed by the city in terms of code, based on frontage and setback. But the customer is requesting to have, the customer's basically requesting to have the larger 12-foot-tall sign, so Dollar Tree does not feel like they are being excluded from that, despite the fact it's not their call, it's the city's, if that makes sense. It's kind of like, they have it, so we want it, and I'm, that's the exact, that's the request that I'm making. This has, I think, less precedence in terms of being granted as a 12-foot-tall sign, but if we can have the same 12-foot-tall sign with a six-foot setback, and they're willing to negotiate where we can place the sign.
You can take it from there, hopefully.
The alternative option is placing it on this island, or significantly north, which is basically blocked by the building to the north, and the island is set back like 75 feet. There will be a wall sign as well, but that is currently under discussion. So there, there will be a building sign, yeah, but that, I would assume on the west elevation, somewhere along that, I mean, that's probably set back 120 feet.
Right, so zoning ordinance allows a sign on the building within certain size and an entrance or monument sign, yeah, within reason?
Yeah, so the, they will not be unbranded, but they will not have as large of a road sign, or as large of a presence, if the sign is not able to be set back that feet. So this, it's either going to be they have a smaller sign set basically there, or we allow a larger sign in a different location to be discussed by the staff and us in a future discussion.
So I'm trying to put this in a little bit of my perspective, as well as our colleagues here. So when we look at the staff recommendation here, if at least today, going with, I think, what you've been discussing in the past, if we had a proposal that we were willing to support, to change that 12 and a half feet setback from the west frontage line to six feet, and allow you to have the taller sign, four feet over the maximum allowed eight, then you can work with staff and push it around further potentially, is that correct?
And I don't have, I mean, we were, we're going to follow the code up to that point, it's just getting, the location of the sign is the only thing in question, and I guess the height of the sign was in question, but the location is what determines the height.
Right, so just trying to keep it in parameters here for what we can decide today, based on what the request was. What's, what's your best outcome for what you'd like us to decide today, then?
So a 12.5-foot setback at this location, the only location that you could place that would be up here in the north.
Yeah, so you're saying that that doesn't work for you?
It would be not visible from southbound traffic.
All right, so did, did you have an alternative request then on the setback?
So I would request the same six-foot setback to allow for this 12-foot-tall sign to be placed at a futurely determined location.
Okay. And if potentially, whether staff fully agrees or not, if we did amend the staff rec to, shall be setback a minimum of six feet from the west frontage line, we don't have to put anything else in here about other negotiations on placement or anything, do Any thoughts on that? Okay.
No, I mean, that's, that's already kind of factored in to the, the staff record. Another thing I do want to note on this one, they don't have an approved site plan, so there's things that can...
This is conceptual here, kind of, at this stage, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that clarification, but I do appreciate seeing that, that kind of, I think helps us put this all in perspective.
So right now, the reason it's 1.25 setback is because of the whole space, if the sign is 11.3 feet long, so that, this whole thing is probably about 15.
Yeah.
But if this is something where we can have a six-foot setback, we might be able to put a bump out in the middle or by there that wouldn't impede traffic, or cause the sign to be hit by a snowplow.
Okay, all right, well, we'll see what we can do then to make that workable. Anything else, Adrian?
Nope.
Okay, all right, anybody speak here in support of the applicant? Anybody in opposition? Neutrality? Okay, seeing none. Eric, anything you want to add?
No.
You're good, okay. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. So we did have the words consistency, and, and what was the other one there? Uniformity, so. So based on that, being consistent, uniformity. Okay, all right, we've probably granted some reasoning for the exception, so would there be a motion? A motion by Rhonda, and that is to what? What is your motion? Okay, all right. So, so you would recommend the exception, staff recommendation with an amendment on item one, six instead of 12 and a half, okay? Second by Marlaus. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. All right, nice work today, Adrian, keep up the good work down there. That plaza I worked there at Major Video back in 1986.
Major Video, nice.
And, you know, it's waxed and it's waned, but I'm, just in the big picture, I'm, I'm glad to see what's, what is happening there and the further investment in that. That'll look real sharp. Okay, moving forward then, that takes us to item four, that was also removed from... Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're just switching.
Okay, that'll move us to item four, which is a conditional use permit request at 4115 University Avenue. Right? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sriya Shichakar Bhatti Planning Staff. Item four is a request from Uptown Partners Corp. for the business that's located at 4115 University Avenue. They are seeking a conditional use for selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer for on-premise consumption in an MX2 district. So the appellant is the subject property here at University, the intersection of 42nd Street. This is a busy intersection, there is quite a few commercial establishments here, both small as well as large scale. The, the business in question is leases a tenant's space in this existing building that you can see right here. There's a shared parking lot, there's quite a few tenants in this existing building, and there's a shared parking lot, providing off-street parking on both the sides, and there's commercial uses to the south, as well as flanking the intersections to the west. To the north, I would point out that there is low-density residential, zoned, and five So this is, these are a few pictures, just to give you an idea of the character of that area. This is the existing building... This is the existing building in question where the subject business is located. This is the shared parking area, this is looking from University. Again, this just shows some of the existing tenants that are located, and a close-up view of the sidewalk and the street. This is the backside of the, of the building, this shows you the, there is low-density residential to the north, as I mentioned, there's a retaining wall, and there's quite a bit of landscaping and vegetation that kind of forms the border of the commercial area to the south and the residential to the north. And again, this is another view of the backside of the building that gives you a rough idea of the, of the spacing between the residential use to the north. It's roughly about 27 feet, this distance right here, from the building up to the retaining wall right here. So the, the appellant is, owns a business which is a event slash kitchen space that is available for rent, for rent, and it's about 2,393 square feet in size, and it's within this existing building right here. The proposal is to be able to allow clients to be able to rent out the kitchen space, and then there is an event space that's attached to the, to the, to that particular business, which would be used for small-scale events, which the applicant has indicated some of the examples of potential uses could be small-scale cooking classes, dinners, cocktail events, and that kind of thing, holding up to about 50 people is what they have proposed in their application. This is a conceptual sketch of the, of the larger area. There are some improvements proposed, which are in coordination with the University Avenue project, so you can see there's going to be some additional landscaping in the parking area, some reconfiguration of the drive aisles, so currently there's two drive aisles, those are going to go away, there's going to be one drive access, there's going to be additional landscaping. There's about 50 off-street parking spaces provided for all of the tenants to share. So that's just a larger concept sketch. Again, this gives you some calculation in terms of the parking spaces and so on. I'll just move on to the floor plan that the, the appellant provided. So this, this gives you an idea of what the space is like, it's, it's about 2,393 square feet, about roughly half of that is going to be used for the kitchen space, which is available for hourly and monthly rentals, so you can see the kitchen is on the backside, there's, there's some table spaces right here, and then the area to the front, which is right here, is where the appellant is proposing a potential event space where small-scale events could be, could be held, and that is where they are proposing the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. I can come back to this, we have some more drawings of the floor, floor plan. In, in reviewing this particular request, staff has looked at the criteria for the board to consider and has provided commentary on each of those criteria. One of the ones that I would like to point out is number seven, and I'll just go right here. So the criteria number seven is that the proposed use shall have no significant detrimental impact for, for the enjoyment of the adjoining properties. Staff believes that the proposed use would not have an impact on the surrounding properties if it operates in accordance with recommended conditions of approval. So with that, I will move on to the staff recommendation. Staff is recommending approval of this conditional use request, subject to nine conditions, which we believe that if this conditional use is approved with those conditions, they would reduce the, any detrimental impact on the neighboring adjoining properties, which there is low-density residential to the, to the north. So I'm going to quickly scan through the, the staff recommendation and the conditions of, of approval. The, the first one is that the business shall operate as a small assembly and entertainment use within an area of approximately 2,393 square feet of the existing building. It shall operate in accordance with a liquor license obtained through the, through the city clerk and approved by city council. The business shall comply with Article 4 of Chapter 42 of the City Code pertaining to noise control. The business shall conspicuously post 24-hour contact information for a manager or owner of the business near the main public entrance. The business shall institute a strict no loitering policy and post one or more no loitering signs and cooperate with police in addressing loitering on the premises. Staff has also recommended hours of operation for event space, event space activities, which shall be limited Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to midnight. Additionally, the hours of operation for public holidays and the public holidays therein have been outlined. And then finally, number seven, pertaining to litter and trash receptacles shall be located at convenient locations inside and outside the premises, and operators of the business shall remove all trash and debris from the premises and adjoining public areas on a daily basis, and any renovation of the building shall be in compliance with all applicable building fire codes and Chapter 135 of the Planning and Design Ordinance. And if at any time the zoning enforcement officer determines that the operation of the business becomes a nuisance and violates the conditions set forth in the conditional use, the zoning enforcement officer may apply to the board to reconsider the issuance of the conditional use. So these are the conditions that staff is recommending with the approval of the conditional The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, and here's a summary. I'm just, I'm going to pause here for a minute to give you some time to scan through this. There were three neighbors in attendance, and these are some of the concerns that they had and some of the discussions that were had, which included, in summary, concerns about day-to-day operation hours, as well as the liquor license itself and concerns about that.
Submitted this letter?
This was submitted to us by the applicant, it was a summary of the.
Oh, it's a summary of the meeting, okay, okay.
We received some comment cards in support and in opposition. This particular one is in support, this one as well, another one, this one is in opposition, there are no comments, this one is in opposition. I do have a couple more comment cards that were just brought to us prior to the meeting, and I'll, I can show them here in a second after I've gone through my slides. This is an email that we received, and the resident has expressed support of the request. Finally, this is the consent map, so you can see the properties that were in support and opposition of the request on the map. This is the second one. And with that, that's the conclusion of my presentation, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Shreya Shekhar? Justin?
Thank you, Chair. In looking at the staff recommendations, particularly item six, curious to know sort of the staff's reasoning for allowing Friday and Saturday and holidays up to midnight. Are there current businesses in there that are open till midnight, or how did you come to that being a reasonable time?
Yes, so the, the hours of operation, there have been similar requests in the past, and this has been staff recommendation for those kind of similar uses, and it was vetted by the board and approved, so we thought that would be a good precedent to use in this case as well, in, in that being a similar use as before.
Follow-up question, do you know, are there current businesses that are being used in there that are open till midnight?
In this particular shopping area? I don't believe so.
Is the Godfather still on the west? No, that's closed now. It's probably because I quit going there. Okay.
How about stuff across the street? Louis' Wine Diner is right across the street. That's probably open till at least.
Right.
On weekends.
All right, well, we'll have the public give a chance to comment here in a minute.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Shreya Shekhar, to the best of your knowledge here, I see there's cards when they make statements about noise and trucks pulling through. I know when people write stuff down, they've got an intention, but I have a difficult time telling with those. Has there been a problem with noise and drunkenness now in the lot, or is that a potential concern in the future? From staff's perspective, are you aware of any excessive police reports or anything to date on the property? Any overall concerns any of you have seen?
We, we do have the, we do have the police reports, and I can, I can probably pull that up. Staff is not aware of any, any concerns. These are potential concerns that have been brought to us by, by neighbors, but we are not aware of any existing concerns.
And, and I know you could pull a police report from my house if you wanted to, but, but there's, there's nothing from staff's perspective that's a sore thumb right now or anything?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll certainly see what the, what, what some other people have for any concerns there. Okay. All right, Jason, you want to add something?
I do want to just clarify that zoning, we don't, those uses around there, they may have hours that they operate, but we don't actually regulate hours.
Exactly.
The only time we ever do that is when there's a conditional use process and there's a reason to.
And while you're here, based on their request, there's no minimum distance requirement from other related liquor things or anything in this case, correct?
Right, they're compliant with all the separation requirements.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all right, so applicant or representative of the applicant, you guys get to go first. If you want to share your time, you can, we just need to know who you are, and you got up to 10 minutes to present your case.
My name is Martha Pesour, and Moxie's address is 4115 University Ave., but I also live in the Waveland Park neighborhood at 162444th. And I am one of four business partners that own Moxie, and two out of the four live in Waveland Park, so we are very concerned about the integrity and enhancing the quality of life in the neighborhood, because it's, it's our neighborhood, so.
Cool.
In the floor plan that we pulled up, and I don't know if we can switch back to that.
Maybe staff can help you with that.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So of the total parcel, about 800 square feet is actually what is used for venue or, or gathering space, and our business plan.
One more down, I bet, right?
There it is.
Yeah.
So, yep, that, that assembly area represents about 800 square feet, which is less than half of the entire portion that we have rented.
Right.
Our business plan entails that we will have shared-use kitchens, and that those tenants will be able to conduct small pop-up events. As you all know, property for restaurants is very hard to come by in this city, and this will afford the ability for small businesses that are getting their start to host something, and with, with the benefit of a liquor license, it will be a true experience for our clients. Historically, you mentioned Godfathers, this was Godfathers, it looks nothing like it now, I can promise you that, but historically, it did function as a restaurant that had a liquor license, and it was there since the 70s. This property, we foresee small gatherings of 50 and under, we see classes that are taught by our tenants and external people that come in, rent our space, and want to host a cocktail party. The noise concern with ending at 10 during the weekday is no different than Louis, our neighbor.
So you guys are on the west end of the building complex?
We're in the center.
Oh, you're, you're, you're in the center, okay.
Yep, so you have a vet office, a state farm, us in the center, and then nails and a chef.
And I remember when the Capri Theater was there on the east end, yeah.
The dormers are still in the ceiling.
Yeah, I don't remember when it first opened, but I remember going to movies there. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I got you, so, so you're the center bay, okay.
Yep, and we did conduct a meeting with the neighborhood, and I know Rob was, was the representative of that, he can speak to that a little bit more.
Okay.
Rob Jackson, 3802 Kingman Boulevard, that's my address, five blocks away from where this establishment is going to be. We did have three people show up for the, the meeting there. It was definitely expressed that Tim Urban is, the biggest concern was that the liquor license would be held under Tim Urban's name, and it will be held under our name from Moxie. The reason why I bring this up is because some of the people that are going to present things to you here were using expletives to describe Tim Urban, calling him a liar, calling him somebody who cannot be trusted, was also able to identify his address on Foster Drive, which I found to be concerning. I own two restaurants here in town, I have two liquor licenses under my name, we've had zero violations of any kind. I actually sleep with my phone underneath my pillow, for any instances that could arise, I'm, I'm down there at the restaurant. I have expressed to the, the people that are here today, they have my personal phone number, they know my proximity to the place, and I'm absolutely responsible to be there at any point in time that, that is necessary. Truly, the questions about what we are providing to the community weren't really the utmost concern, the biggest concern was not doing anything that could help Tim Urban in any way, shape, or form. One of the other items that was expressed was a Godfather's truck that sat overnight. Again, I referred, referred to my phone number, and I said, if anything like that would ever occur, I will get that taken care of personally for you. Most any deliveries that this place would have would be during the daytime. Food purveyors would most likely be there sometime during the day, you know, dropping things off, however, that's not really what the concept's about. Most of these partners and people that would be renting will actually go do their own shopping, bring in their own foods, and there won't be a whole lot of deliveries going on there. So my biggest concern is that, the concern is more with Tim Urban, the property owner, and not Moxie, the operators that are going to be inside there.
Okay, so Martha, Rob, that's your case? Okay, any take some questions from the board? All right, Justin?
Thank you. So, and you mentioned this, Moxie is going to be kind of the one that's going to be there in regulating things, oversight, you know, and this is a small assembly, this is what you're, you're coming to get the conditional use for. How, how do you plan to regulate or, or enforce 50-person events?
Yeah, I mean, are you referring to the sale of alcohol or just general enforcement plan?
Well, I think this is, for the small assembly, you're limited to a certain number of people, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so how do you, how do you plan to, how do you enforce that?
Manage it.
Manage it, yeah.
Yep, I've worked in events for 10 years, and we would just contractually obligate the total number of people that are required. We. We would operate under, you know, compliance with any kind of fire code that we have. There will be an onsite manager for every event. And our, with us holding the liquor license as opposed to a catering company coming in and using their own license on our property, it allows us the ability to manage and train our staff to ensure that there is, you know, safety and compliance. Not, not, there's not a catering company in town that I wouldn't trust, but it allows us the ability to ensure that good customer experience and a good neighborhood experience, because we're the ones who are there handling things.
So as far as compliance, and you said that you or someone would be there during the event. So then you would mon-
Just pull it towards you.
Okay. You would monitor that everyone would be out of there by either 10 or 12, depending on the day of the week?
Absolutely. I can tell you, as a former event manager, there's nothing more thrilling than kicking people out. Like, it's my favorite job. So absolutely, it is, you know, the hours of operation that are outlined in the contract and what's provided to us here by the city is what would be adhered to.
Okay. Thank you.
I have also expressed, having, having anybody in the neighborhood can have my phone number. If there is any issue with compliance there, again, I'd be there on the spot and be able to take care of that. Furthermore, the staff members that will be responsible will take the IPAC test and also serve safe alcohol, so they'll have their accreditations that are necessary to serve safely.
So Rob, you made a statement that you were really there to answer questions about what we are providing.
That's correct.
And that is my boring preamble that I give at every meeting. It's supposed to be about the facts as germane to the case at hand. So people's opinions, if they want to call people names, stuff like that, that's not, that's not for us to consider. What we're here to consider is questions about what you're providing. And as I understand this, Martha gave a good kind of background here, but I'm trying to think of something similar. I know there's like Chat Noir Cafe in Sherman Hill. You go in, there'll be guest chefs or something that come into the chat. They, you pay to have a fancy meal, and certainly, the fancier the meal, the nicer the wine should be. So they have a liquor license, or they do whatever for that, but it's centered around the food and the event. Generally speaking, is that a, a good chunk of what your business model's going to be?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We are open to the public for rental for small-scale events. So if somebody wanted to host a cocktail party, that is absolutely still in our-
Okay. That's going to be my next question. If you had been open when I turned 50, I might have said, hey, I want to have a party for just maybe, gosh, a couple dozen of my friends. Maybe we're going to cater in some food from somebody else, but oh, the liquor would be through you. So if it's a small event of somebody, you know, reception, party, anniversary, you would host that as well then, potentially?
Correct. Yes.
So it's not always sit-down dinners?
No.
But if you are hosting a quote "party," it's going to be a very small and limited in the size of area where those people can be?
Correct.
Because you're not going to have them back in your kitchen area screwing around?
No, absolutely not. No, it's at 800 square feet at the, at the front of this space, entirely separated from the kitchen area.
I got you.
And whether our, one of our tenants that rents the kitchen is doing the catering or an external caterer, that's neither here nor there, but we would be in control of the bar and all bar sales.
And to make this, not, not that we get into the finance here, but to make your business model work, you're probably going to want to have events more than just a Friday, Saturday.
Correct.
So you're probably going to, like, weekday events are probably going to be a dinner thing or a corporate little reception thing or something like that, right?
Absolutely. That is inherent to our business model. And 50, you know, speaking freely here, 50 in event world is a very small number.
Yep.
We're not going to be attracting weddings. There is very little desire for a Midwest wedding that's 50 people.
Right.
So, you know, the rowdier functions that are, I think, the predominant concern of the neighborhood, our clientele is just not going to want our venue for that.
Okay. I got you. All right. Well, thank you for the clarification. Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you both. Okay. So for this next part of the hearing, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant's request? We start with support. Anybody in support? Seeing none. Is there anybody here in opposition? You can democratically decide who goes first. Usually, it's ladies. All right. We just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
All right. Is it possible to shrink that down to fit?
Yeah, I think staff can help you there.
We've got a couple pages.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Catherine Lang. You've seen my name on a couple of the documents already. I live at 121641st Street. And if you recall the picture of the foliage between the parking lot, we are on the other side of the foliage, and we are the reason the foliage is there. I have lived in that, at 121641st Street for 27 years. And in that 27 years, the parking lot, we have had to call the police numerous times for gang activity, shootings, and noise. We have seen women beaten in that parking lot at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. It, it is a dangerous sight. It has been a big problem, and we have called the police many, many times over those incidents as well as excessive noise. So we planted the trees to help shield some of the light. There's a high-intensity light that shines directly from the parking lot into our bedroom. The, the building in question is 20 feet less, just over 20 feet from the back door and the bedroom window. It has been a problem in the past. We have not had very much cooperation from Uptown Partners, too, in those years. And when we requested things such as the lighting and various other things to be fixed, oh, basically, they were ignored. That is why you might see some, or hear some, some problems stated with that particular corporation. When we first heard about the new project that's going into the former Godfathers, we were told it would be an industrial kitchen where people could prepare food, such as people who have food trucks and are not, do not have a suitable kitchen. That wasn't too much of a concern. We were worried that the trucks that would be going right back behind our back door might be noisy, and we've had problems with that in the past, in the early wee morning hours. But the lick, what really alarmed our neighborhood was the fact there was going to be a liquor license. And everybody knows that's been a troublesome area. We felt that the liquor would fuel, fuel the problems. It is, it has been presented that it will be a small venue site. We just aren't sure if that can, will hold up, and we don't know how it can be regulated, the noise. Midnight, when you are 20 feet from a loud parking lot, it's not very far, and it's very disruptive. The 12 o'clock curfew is a very big concern. So as you see, we have quite a number of our neighbors who have signed that. And just on a more personal note, I'd like to say, I moved into that house 27 years ago from California because I wanted my children to be raised in a better place. And we, lo and behold, found the perfect neighborhood, and we just want to keep it as the perfect neighborhood. As you see, we have a lot of cohesiveness, a lot of friendliness among our neighbors, and we support each other. This is a concern. And thank you very much for allowing us to speak. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down today. Okay. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Come on up. Just need your name, address. You've got up to five minutes.
My name is Michael Adams, and I live at 123441st Street in Des Moines. I've lived there for 22 years, and I walk my, for the past 10 years at least, I've walked my dog every night at 9:00. So I'm very conversant with that alley and that parking lot and the, and the neighborhood. I'm here today to express some concerns about the potential for disrupting the peaceful nature of that neighborhood by Moxie's current business model. Now, it's my understanding that it's going to be a 24/7 operation, and that in and of itself, you know, has some potential for noise issues. But my real main concern is the venue part of the business model. I mean, you're talking about 10:00 PM during the week and 12:00 PM on the, on the weekends. The main gathering, I guarantee you, the main gathering spot for that venue is going to be that parking lot that's immediately to the east and to the south of our neighborhood. And then when we talk about our neighborhood, we're talking about 41st Street from University to Forest for the most part. So all those names you saw in the petition were from, you know, neighbors in, in that section of the, of the street, on 41st Street. I want to say that at least 90%, if not more, of those neighbors are homeowners. So it's not, there's not a whole bunch of rental property. I know there's one there on the neighborhood, for the most part, near Forest. But that parking lot, if you have a 10:00 PM, you know, closing time for distribution and sale of alcohol, it's going to spill over into that parking lot, you know, guaranteed. You know, if the party started there and ends at 10:00 PM, as far as Moxie's concerned, then it's going to spill over into that parking lot, and then who knows how long that issue's going to be. And then the weekends, it's going to be even longer. So I'm here, and several of my neighbors are here, I think, to express some opposition to this, unfortunately. You know, there's already been a large investment in this property, and I have a sense that, you know, it might be happening, but it's, I think it's important to express some concern now and go on some record. So if we do have some issues sometime in the future, you know, at least we've, we've come before, you know, city entity and expressed those concerns. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
I've only been there 31 years. I did raise two children there. They've both moved away and, and are living their own lives. I've jotted down four concerns. One is grease trap cleanout. When there's a restaurant, a few years back, the city passed an ordinance requiring a grease trap. I'm familiar with, that the grease trap cleanout at Louis', I think, takes place at 5:00 AM. Not only is it a noisy endeavor, but it does present an odor, a strong odor. And, and, you know, there's, there's no housing by where that grease truck is parked. For the, for this operation, the grease truck would be parked in that parking lot, and I'm sure there are several neighbors that would, would notice that. I'm wondering about the occupancy allowed by fire code. I know that fire code, you know, comes in and inspects. I would wonder if they had checked that out and confirmed what the occupancy, allowed occupancy would be allowed in there. There are no businesses, no restaurants or bars in the area open till midnight. There are none. Godfathers wasn't even open till midnight. I think they closed at 10:00, even on weekends. She said she likes kicking people out at, at closing time. I've worked at several restaurants throughout my life. Campers, I, I have yet to see a manager kick campers out. I kind of doubt that at 10:05, someone's going to step up and go, hey, we closed five minutes ago. There's the door. One of my Facebook groups, I just read an issue where someone said their restaurant closes at 8:30. Someone, two people came in at, at 8:00, said, we're party at 6:00. Two more came in, and they told them the closing time. Throughout the whole story, make the whole story short, those people were there till 10:30, even after their table had been cleared, cleared off, with the server standing there just staring at them. So no, people don't leave at closing time. That, that's not the restaurant experience that I have seen, and I would challenge them that, that ain't happening there either. Thank you very much for your time, folks.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Walsh. I was born and raised in Beaverdale. I live at 40, at 121641st. I am here to speak in opposition to the issuance of a liquor license. I was the one that passed the petition around, and I didn't have to convince anybody to sign it. They were very eager. They do not want another bar in our neighborhood. You can call it whatever you want, but if people are in there drinking till midnight, it's going to disrupt our neighborhood. We have a really great neighborhood. Our neighbors, we get along with everybody. We know everybody. We have a party every year. We block off the street, and there's no alcohol. But anyhow, we block off the street. We really get to know each other. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's full of beautiful houses, and this is going to disrupt it. My bedroom is less than 20 feet from the parking lot. Our property line is less than that from the back door of this business. There's an alley that runs in between our house and the business. The, I had, I was one of the people that attended the meeting for the residents, and we were told that the business would be done at 8:00. It would be closed, no problem. There'd be no reason to, to make any argument against it, because I believe it's Mr. Jackson is his name, told me, 8:00, no problem. The, the only person that signed this that was not in our direct neighborhood was the Islamic mosque. They, they were opposed to it also. My wife mentioned the problems with the parking lot. It's been unbelievable. And as far as not having the police called, the police have been called to that neighborhood many, many times. It's a constant problem. And it's obvious to me that none of the staff live in our neighborhood. It's just, I mean, we're really close, we really love it, we have beautiful homes, we put a lot of time and money in it, and we don't want it ruined by a bar. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down today. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Come on up.
My name's Carl Kaufman. I live at 122241st Street. So I'm one of the people you didn't get a card from. I apologize, but thank you for the information. I feel like, to some extent, what I'm trying to do is gather what I'm hearing or some different viewpoints. I did not or was not able to attend the presentation that was put on by the, the folks from Moxie. My concerns are the hours, really the hours of operation and the noise. There are some noise issues currently. Like I said, I live three houses north. There's some things that go probably in the face of, of the noise ordinance in terms of, you know, trash trucks picking up, picking up garbage at 5:00 in the morning. And pretty much, I think, everybody south of me and, and folks to the north are, are woken up. So when you, when you extrapolate that, if we're talking about hours of operation for trucks in the kitchen, and I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, I'm hearing some hearsay about how long this is operating, you know, the hours of operation for the kitchen versus the event space, but, you know, truck traffic would be exempt from the noise ordinance issues for the most part. If it's below 30, 35 miles an hour, those trucks moving through that alley could be 88 decibels, which is, you know, the equivalent of a, a lawnmower early in the morning. That's pretty, pretty abrupt. I'm a little concerned about the hours on, late into the evening, and I can understand from a business operational model, you know, why Friday and Sa- from a business operational model, you know, why Friday and Saturday, one would want to go to midnight. Concerned that that's pretty late relative to the neighborhood and those residential functions that are happening immediately adjacent. Also, kind of relative to what's going on, you know, if folks are kind of ushered out at midnight, what happens? There's nothing else that's open if folks are going to continue conversations, you know, fifty feet away from somebody's bedroom. You know, what is that? So I have some concerns. I don't know that that means we can't work together as a, as a community, as a neighborhood to try to address those. But I am a little bit apprehensive on the details of how the business is used. I understand that you're looking at it from a liquor license standpoint. I'm not sure that that helps those issues that I just mentioned. I can foresee some other issues that could go along with, with the liquor license and the consumption of alcohol on the property. But we have some of those across the street with Louis' Wine Dive. It's separated by a pretty busy street. But just to kind of wrap that back up, my real concerns are, or my biggest concerns are hours of operation and the noise that's generated. So, thank you.
Okay. Yes, question for Carl?
Yes, I guess to everyone who spoke.
Sure.
Get 'n Go at Forty Second University came up in front of us not all that long ago, but, and I believe they're open until midnight. And I know that's a, sorry about that. Get 'n Go, and I just looked it up, and it looks like it's open till midnight. And I know that's across university from where many of you live, but is that a problem? What?
Okay, we, Marla, we can't ask questions to the general audience. You can ask a question to Carl if you want.
Just Carl. Okay. Is Get 'n Go, are Get 'n Go's hours a concern?
You know, there's the practical hours and the, and the hours on the door. We don't see a ton of traffic at Get 'n Go, either early in the morning or late into the evening.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I don't know what their hours of operation are, but I haven't personally had an issue. I think part of it is the distance. You know, I think I did some, some rough calculations of, you know, sounds dropping off at the distance squared. You know, I can hear music in my living room playing at Louis' Wine Dive on the patio with the windows closed. I'm a little bit concerned that if that happens during the middle of the day, what's going to happen in the night when, you know, the, the same sound would be about three and a half times louder, just given the distance.
Okay. Thank you.
So Carl, since I think you're last up, I'm going to ask you some questions, maybe pick on you a little bit.
I might be the least, I apologize.
Okay, so you live on Forty First Street, a lot or two north there, correct? I'm speaking to Carl.
Yeah, Forty First Street.
Yeah, so how many lots are you north of the parking lot there?
I'm the third house to the north.
Okay, all right.
On the west side of the street.
Right. So you do hear noise, quote, noise from university? You hear loud pipes on trucks? You hear Harley's? You might hear radios on cars?
You know, if, if I had to pinpoint it, it's probably, I hear some loud motorcycle mufflers.
Right. But you live three lots north of a major commercial district with commercial businesses, correct?
Yes.
And Forty First Street, I never speed on it. I'm always polite. But Forty First has a lot of traffic that wants to cut up there to hit the curve up at, up by, to get up to Franklin there on Lower Beaver, right?
Yeah, this is true. There's, there's an offset in the arterial, which is Forty Second Street, and it goes north, and a lot of people use our street as a cut through.
So you have a nice, quiet neighborhood, but yet at the same time, you're very close to a major urban area with a lot of businesses, right?
Yeah, there's not an insignificant amount of ambient noise.
Right. And I think you said that your biggest concern was the liquor, correct?
No, no. My biggest concern is-
Well, yes, and the hours that would be related to that.
The noise and the hours.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to verify that because as a commercial district, if somebody wanted to have a donut shop there with a grease trap and with trucks delivered and with garbage picked up, it's a commercial district. We don't have any oversight over that. There's going to be a little noise in a commercial district once in a while from commercial activities. But is your concern, again, the hours of operation related to then the liquor that goes with those hours?
Right, right. The liquor that goes with those hours and then how that's mitigated.
Okay.
People who've been consuming alcohol have been known to not have the best judgment.
Okay.
So I, I mean, to your point about the ambient noise, I don't, I don't want to minimize that. I'm not, I'm not anticipating I'm going to be in an open meadow somewhere.
Right, okay.
Relative to rest of the ambient noise, there are some real problems.
Okay, I got you. I got you. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet? Anybody to speak in neutrality? We always do the Switzerland thing, just in case. Okay, all right. Seeing none, zoning enforcement officer, anything you want to add?
Eric Clendy, zoning enforcement officer. I think there's a little misconception here by some of the neighbors. What's the board considering? The board is considering a use which is considered an event center. They're asking to have the conditional use for another use to have a liquor license. That said, they are not a restaurant. They are not a bar. And that's going to be treated differently in the way the code looks at this.
Right.
Certainly. I understand that impacts that they're bringing up are similar, and I don't want to discount those statements that are in their concerns. It is something that runs with the land. The board is not granting a liquor license. That goes to the operators. The owner of the property can terminate a lease and bring in another operator doing the same type of use that may not operate under the same exact business model. Now, if there's conditions on the conditional use, they would have to follow those same limitations. So that's an important thing to understand here is that if the board doesn't grant a conditional use, this business model would be able to operate by catering in liquor licenses for their separate events. They would not have control over that piece of the operation. That would be up to the catering operators that would operate on site. This zoning has no limitations on hours of operation, so you would have no conditions regulating the hours of operation. Now, they would have to comply with our sound ordinances, just like any other business would have to do. So from that standpoint, we would still have enforceability on issues with sound. But I guess the point I'm trying to make here is that not granting the conditional use would actually possibly result in the same business model, just with a different mechanism for how the liquor is sold and transferred to the property. So I think the board has more control on hours and to mitigate some of the issues that have been brought up, honestly, if they, they consider it as a conditional use. That's also more enforceable from my perspective as a zoning enforcement officer, when we have those things in writing and when we review the liquor licenses against those standards. They're much easier to enforce when we do have problems. And as you know, we've brought back and modified those things or revoked those things when we've had problems. So there is that additional power. When we don't have a conditional use, you really, this, it's going to be much harder to enforce legally, honestly, if we do have problems. So I did want to point that out. And then the last thing is, please disregard any mention of what staff, where they live. That should not factor into your decision.
Well, I was counting all of you. There's only about a dozen of you in the planning department, and none of you live in my neighborhood.
No, no.
You're a little-
I can assure you that some people-
We've got to spread you around.
Some people here have lived there for more than twenty-some years.
Yeah. Well, Eric, since you're up here, a couple quick questions. I saw there was kind of an improved parking lot plan that was shown. I don't know if that was yours or the applicant's. Is that a requirement to do this transition, a site plan or anything?
This change of use for the building is triggering both a certificate of occupancy under the building codes, which will determine the occupancy of the building. That's not anything that's under the board's purview.
We understand that.
The grease interceptor is going to be required, whether there's a liquor license here or not. So that's going to, you know, truck operations are going to be the same.
Yeah.
The site is, plan is triggered through this process as well because of the change of use for the space. So by going to a catering-type kitchen, it's actually changing the way the building code looks at the space for the occupancy of the space. So that's triggering some of these other things. I know that the concerns, there are concerns around some of those other types of reviews that the city will do, but other than requiring them to adhere to them, I don't think the board has a lot of purview to really adjust that, so to speak.
And I'm guessing we all kind of know that, but I'm glad to have you help reinforce, clarify where our decision-making is.
And I also want to say, I don't expect, you know, the average neighbor or layperson to really have a feel or grasp of-
We understand.
The inner workings of those things, but I did want to clarify that for the board.
Yep. And while you're here, or Trey Oshie could help with this too, but they proposed a floor plan of where, you know, she kept saying like eight hundred square feet about is our service area. If we're inclined to approve this, if we would be, can we say, "Hey, and the assembly space shall be limited to generally what was shown for areas or percentages of use of the floor plan"?
You could do that, and then that would trigger another process if they went to modify it down the road.
Right, okay. Yeah, because again, you know, somebody give them an inch, they take them out. "Hey, we got our event center approved." Suddenly, the kitchen's smaller, the assembly area's twice as big. "Hey, that's not what I thought you were going to do, guys. Shucky darn."
Yeah, and the occupancy number is going to be tied to that seating, type of seating in that area, and how much area is devoted to kitchen, how much is to storage. That all factors into what the ultimate occupant load is for the buildings.
Okay. And the applicant will get a last chance to comment here, but the hours of operation that staff has listed, I think Trey Oshie said that was typical of some other operations we've approved in what one might say is a similar situation. But that in essence, like the speed limit is seventy on the road. You can drive sixty if you want. So we may come back to the applicant and ask a little bit, but the hours that have been listed by staff, that I would assume is kind of your maximum you would support. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's probably consistent with how we view, previous to the current code, this was in an NPC district, which had to adhere to standards of a zoning that it replaced called C-1. And C-1 did have hours of operation limitations that ended at two in the morning.
Right.
The liquor license still is going to have a maximum on when that can, when service can occur. So even though theoretically in this zoning, you can operate twenty-four hours, the liquor sales is still subject to the liquor license that the state will issue.
Okay, I got you. Okay. Anything else we'd want to ask Eric or city staff? Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Okay, applicant, you get to wrap it up. This is how the process works. You've got three minutes. You're welcome to share that time with the two of you, but if you want to respond to any of the neighbors' concerns or any of the particulars here.
Certainly. So to clarify a few things regarding hours, I know that there was quite a bit of confusion and discussion about that. So the catering portion, which is three kitchens, so three potential tenants can use it at once, and I own a small bakery and I am a sole proprietor, and I am in my kitchen by myself, often when I'm operating, and most of our tenants will be as well, that portion, tenants will have twenty-four-hour access to. So you're looking at six potential bodies using ovens, stoves indoors at, you know, the potential of twenty-four hours a day. So I hope that that allays fears and concerns there. In relation to the event space, what we had proposed is that events have to end by eleven with a cutoff thirty minutes prior to the hours of the event. So if the contract is drafted for an event that runs from five until nine PM, last call is at eight-thirty, and people are out the door at nine. And with, with the contract, we can impose penalties and financial ramifications if people do not vacate on time. It costs us money to remain open past what we've expected to staff, and it's not fair to our team to ask them to remain just because people are wandering around. Like, it's a pretty effective mechanism when you hurt people's pocketbooks to get them out the door. So I know that there was a question about that, and regarding grease trap, I just wanted to touch on that briefly. A grease trap has been installed already on the property, and yes, it will need to be cleaned out. Any questions?
Questions for Martha or Rob?
I truly do understand and respect what, what everybody's saying in the community. As I live real close to the university library cafe, I share those concerns. And I think what, what this really all boils down to are controls. How do we control our establishment here? The recommendation here is that zoning enforcement at any point in time could be alerted to any problems. Those are control measures to make sure that we're operating the way that is good for the community. That's, that's really what we want to do, is we want to provide something that is good for the community. I welcome anybody who is on this list or any of you to relay this. My name is Rob Jackson. I will leave my name and number there, and at any point in time, anybody that's on this list or anywhere in the community can get ahold of me and express concerns on when trash pickup is. When the grease trap's getting cleaned out, hours of operation, we want to work with the community. So I encourage any issues or concerns to be directly addressed to me, and I'd be happy to resolve those at any point in time. And I'd also like to make mention that the controls are already put in place by the staff here to make sure that everything's compliant. Thank you for your time.
So Martha, I do want to come back to something. This is very important for everybody that's here. So staff recommendation is approval, subject to certain conditions, and they have under condition six, limiting your hours of operation for the event space activities, which would mean guests that are enjoying the party or whatever, that Sunday through Thursday, that has to be over by ten, and Friday and Saturday has to be over by midnight. Are you saying that your policy would be shorter hours, different than that?
The contract would be drafted that it could not exceed ten o'clock, but if somebody only wanted to rent the space for a few hours.
Ten o'clock on any night?
Nope, Sunday through Thursday, is what was stated, and then midnight. We had decided internally as a measure that we wouldn't exceed eleven o'clock on the weekends. We feel that that is sufficient for a cocktail party.
So not to push you on the plank on the ship here, but what if we said, "Well, that's nice. Staff's recommending some similar things to what they've similarly seen, but maybe on Friday and Saturday, eleven PM is late enough."
Absolutely fine with us.
If we put that in as a condition, potentially, if this was to move forward, would that be, it wouldn't destroy your business model?
Not at all.
Okay, all right. Just want to know that. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, now we've got some discussion. So thank you. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. We'll go to board deliberations. Okay, board members, any initial thoughts or ideas or directions on this one?
This is really similar, just on a smaller scale than the Willow. We approve that.
I can hear you.
Yeah, Mike Torjev.
This is really not a whole lot different than an item we had on the agenda within the last eighteen months. It's called the Willow. It's on Grand. It's not far from my neighborhood. There were twice as many people in here objecting to that for similar concerns, and they have less parking than this. There hasn't been any issues, to my knowledge. But to the applicant's credit, what I think a lot of citizens fail to realize is that we have repercussions if they overstep their bounds, and we can make their life miserable. And I think that we've demonstrated our ability to do that. We're not afraid to do that. So, and I, and I would say that these two applicants seem to be very serious, and they've got a pretty good handle on what's going on. They've made themselves available to you as a neighbor if you have any concerns. I don't see any, I'd be willing to bet a lot of money there's not going to be any tailgating in this parking lot after hours. There's no reason to be in the parking lot other than to get in and out of your car because it's not even adjacent. because it's not even adjacent to the entrance to this building. Is that right? So, I think we've got somebody here that's looking to spend a lot of money, they're going to fix up this whole area. You're on a major corridor. You've been there for, some of you, over thirty years. University's a busy street. There's commerce taking place on there all the time on both sides of the street. Some of the density is different, depending in some areas. There's houses down the street that have been converted to dentist offices and orthodontists. We've got a great community. I think this is a great project. I think this is going to have, offer some tremendous opportunities to some people that otherwise might not have those. And some businesses could get born out of this that are going to go somewhere else in our community. So, I think staff has covered this very well. We've already understand that we can alter the hours to eleven P.M. And I think, I think it's going to be a great project, and I'm going to vote for it. And I'm going to give these, these, these two operators a whole lot of credit because I think they've come very, very prepared. More prepared than many of the applicants that we approve projects for. So, and they're already business operators. One's got two restaurants. I don't care who holds the liquor license. This isn't a bar. There's not going to be people wandering in from Louis saying, hey, can we go in here and have a cocktail? So, I, I think city's done their, their due diligence. I think these two owners have got a really good handle on what they want to accomplish. And I, I think it sounds like a great project.
All right. Start for the discussion from Dave. Anybody else?
I'm in support, too. I am much more comfortable that it's eleven o'clock instead of midnight. So that was a good thing to do.
Justin?
Thank you, Chair. You know, it's part of our job sometimes is to try to balance competing interests. You know, I'm a neighbor, I live in a neighborhood right off of Ingersoll. So I understand what these neighbors are, are thinking about. My street is the one that, just right down the road, is the new restaurant that's going in. So I understand your concerns. On the other hand, it's anticipated that there will be some noise when you live right off of a huge thoroughfare. Right? So, you know, on our board here, we need to take in consideration both, both interests. I think this is a great project. I, I do have a little concern about the, the hours of operation on the weekends, quite honestly. You know, Louis, we did talk about that, that was part of the discussion, you know, they're open. I looked at their website, you know, they're open till ten on Fridays and Saturdays. They're only open at nine on Mondays, Monday through Thursday, they're open that time. And that's even across the street and not close to any, any neighborhood people. So, that would be the only concern I guess I would raise, and maybe that could be, we could have a little further discussion, is just Fridays and Saturdays, you know, limiting that to, to ten. Ten across the board, Monday through Sunday. So, I'd like to open that up for some discussion, is that, I know we're talking about an hour here, and I know that's what we're talking about. Well aware of that, but I would like to just have that as part of the discussion. It sounded like when Godfathers was there, they weren't open past ten.
Right.
Now we have Louis, that's, that is a restaurant bar, and that is not open past ten. So, thank you.
Yep. This board is great. We have difficult decisions to make. Everybody puts their heart and their mind into things. We have to do the same thing here. And Justin, with what you just mentioned, excellent points. What I try to remember is this is not a pizza restaurant. This is not Louis Wine Bar. I've never been to Louis Wine Bar, but I'm assuming you go in there and you're maybe just sampling or drinking a bottle of wine with couples or something. I don't, it's not an event center, right?
Right.
So I would assume that, yeah, by the time ten o'clock comes, it's maybe time to go home from that. But I would think on a weekend, if I go to a reception or a party, I'm not home in time to watch the news at ten, I might want to enjoy that a little longer. Enjoying it till midnight? Well, again, even though it's a commercial district, it does border a neighborhood. The parking lot does border the neighborhood. So maybe midnight's not appropriate. The applicant's already said, hey, staff's recommending midnight, you know, to be consistent and fairly fair, but I'm okay with eleven on a weekend. I think that's pretty fair. You know, if you're going to have an event center, if you've got to close too early, well, you're not really an event center. You know, if I'm going to go to an evening party on the weekend, you know, if you, they kick you out too early, it's not much of a weekend event. And keep in mind, this is a small location. This is not a big thing. And I'll give my elevator speech, I've been on this board for a long time. This is like a high schooler that gets their driver's license. I'm dad, I got the nice Camaro, you can take it out on prom. Here's the rules. You screw up, you know what's going to happen. If you're going to spend tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars improving this place, and we give you this little license to drive, and you screw up, and they bring you back in here, if we give you enough rope and you trip yourselves up, do you think you're going to get any kind of, I don't know, what apathy from me? Probably not. So in other words, the onus is on you. If we're inclined to give you this, you better be careful. And I've had some bar owners, tavern owners, other places that have remembered when I've said that because they've gotten back in front of us. So I don't want you back in the principal's office if we're inclined to give you some latitude to be a local business entrepreneur, to invest in this building. Part of me sits here and goes, well, let's just close all the businesses in the building so we don't have dumpsters, and we don't have grease traps, and we don't have delivery trucks. I don't think that would be an asset for the neighborhood around Forty Second and University. I don't think that that would be good. It's a thriving neighborhood of both commercial and residential. It's fun. I'd go to the Capri and watch movies in high school. I thought it was a great neighborhood. That was a long time ago. And by the way, it was built so they could show Ben Hurd one of the first seventy-millimeter movies, at least that's the, that's, that's the lore I've always heard, that some of the other single screens couldn't support those kinds of movies. But in looking at that, again, if we're inclined to improve this, there are checks and balances. I think Dave referenced that. There's a list of more than a dozen here. You're going to have to watch your Ps and Qs to make this work. But I'm hopeful you'll be able to do it because your model, this isn't a bar. This is not a tavern. So, I'd generally be okay with the closing by eleven on the weekends, myself. Anybody else have any other thoughts? Only got one other board member here. So, come on, Rodney.
Actually agreeing with you. I'm thinking eleven for Fridays and Saturdays, if the time thing is an issue, because ten or ten o'clock during the week is kind of common, but eleven would work for Fridays and Saturdays. I'm the same way. If I'm going someplace and you've got to be home before ten, or closes at ten, then that's not an event that I would really want to go back to. But I, I think eleven o'clock is sufficient.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for staff.
Sure.
Let's change six. Let's change the Friday, Saturday hours from eight AM to eleven.
Okay. I will second that with a friendly amendment, if you're okay with this, Dave. I'd like to amend item one. It says that the business-selling alcohol line, beer, will operate small assembly entertainment within an area of approximately, you know, twenty-three ninety-three square feet of the existing building. With, and I'd like to amend that, with the assembly area being limited to a proportion or ratio of the floor space as generally shown on the applicant's floor plan, blah, blah, blah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's fine. And then I think the city's also going to determine what the occupancy is based on that.
As, as well. And I know that, that one of the folks had a question about occupancy and like fire code. That is all required in the law. We have no say. We can't amend that. That's a protection as well.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. But, but generally, like, like I said, if you just decide a month later to move your counter back and add three more tables in, no.
I have a point of inquiry for Dave.
What's that, Justin?
I have a point of inquiry for Dave.
Sure, sure.
When he mentioned the, the eleven o'clock, does that also, you're talking about the public holidays as well, Dave?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's, that's a very good point. Very good point. Okay. So we've got then a motion to approve the request of conditional use with an amendment on six to limit hours on Friday and Saturday to eleven P.M., including limiting hours to eleven P.M. on the public holidays listed, as well as an amendment to item one, the assembly area shall be proportional to what's shown. As long as that's clear for the record. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right. That carries five to zero. So, you'll get a copy of this next week when you get ready to be up and running. I would suggest an open house and invite the forty-first, forty-second neighbors to be some of your first folks to see your, your place. I think that'd be a great idea. So, I wish you all well, and thank you for coming in today and, and sharing your opinions,